Richard's looking at the big clock.
He did it twice and it's like...
I think I've watched this.
He's saying work.
And basically the money you had to give.
I don't know.
I'm sure he's right.
He has this one, yeah.
I think they mostly use that.
I don't have a watch.
All right. So we get started so we don't have to stay so late tonight. Let's call to this work session to order, January 29th. Work session meeting. Roll call, just call out. Diane, would you start?
Diane, who is here?
Mitch Parsons.
Deanna Hinton.
Rick Park.
Kathy Steer, City Reporter.
Riley Hoagland.
Dick Anderson.
Judy Casper.
Ron Chandler.
And just a reminder, mics are up above, so you have to speak up. Oh, I'm sorry, Richard, way off in the corner. Into the mic. But just, yeah, speak up. Mr. Chandler, it's all yours.
Okay, thank you, and especially thanks for coming after a very long night, last night. I promised we would finish this in two hours. We'll probably finish it in less than that, unless you guys are really long-winded, because there's one portion of it. We have four items that we had on the agenda. The part on planning and community development, the bulk of that, I'm pushing that to your February 4th meeting, but I do have an item to report on, the assignment you guys had given me earlier. So, the reason why we've requested to hold this work meeting is really twofold. We are in full budget mode, and it gives us a chance, a lot of the questions that we hear in the Budget Committee meetings pertain to the operations. It gives us a chance to more familiarize you with, or for councilors that have been around for a little bit, to bring you up to date on some of the departmental activities. It's also, you guys are in full priority-setting mode, and these next two meetings are really meant to be preparatory to your retreat on the 9th, where that will be dedicated towards you guys establishing the priorities as a council that you want the staff to pursue. Because we're in full budget mode, much of my thoughts are in economic terms, financial terms and economic terms. And I kind of wanted, and I wanted to start off with a little bit of, we have 10 departments. However, we are only going to be discussing seven of those departments in these next two meetings. The reason is, is that there's an economic principle that I think holds true, which is wealth is created through the production of goods and services. And the goods and the services that the city provide are those that are provided by the public works, which are water, sewer, streets, storm drain, services provided by the police department, services provided by the community development, economic development services, which are really in three ways of delivering that service. One is through urban renewal, the other is through economic development, and the third is through marketing or Explore Lincoln City, parks and recreation, and then library. All of the other departments, such as administration, attorney, finance, may support the production of these goods and services. Unlike a business, we are not a profit center. However, there should be and agreed upon measures of success, both quantitative and qualitative. Some of those are easy, some departments that's easy to do, some departments that's more difficult. Part of what we're going to present to you tonight are the things that I have discussed with the staff, that we're going to be discussing on what are the measures of success, what are the activities that lead to those measures of success. And then we're also, as you think to your priority session, the this-for-that rule, okay, or in economic terms, the opportunity cost. In all that we do, the thing that we hope most that happens with the city council is that you focus on the delivery of the services, and what services you want, and what level of services do you want. So for example, if you wanted to increase the police service, if you wanted a particular type of police service that would increase their budget by a million dollars, okay, that's fine, but there is a that for that, and that's that you would lose another service somewhere. And those trade-offs are always a part of what we do, the this-for-that, and they're fine, as long as you know what you're going to get and you know what you're going to lose in those levels of services, and you're agreed upon that. So the first, any questions before we get started? Okay, we're going to begin tonight with Explore Lincoln City. Ed, come on up to join us up at the table. I gave to you copies of the notes that I'm working from, and so that you can follow on. Mostly, mostly, those notes are for you to refer to later, because we are certainly not going to cover everything that I put you in that. The vision of Explore Lincoln City is to create a vibrant and prosperous Lincoln City as the preferred destination on the Oregon coast. Its goal is to position Lincoln City as the Oregon coast destination, offering the unexpected seven-mile-long stretch of town and beach, full of unique surprises, big and small. The measures of success, and the reason I started with Explore Lincoln City is because it's the easiest, is transient room tax and economic impact, okay? They're very quantifiable, and the activities that we should, or that we do, should all lead to those measures of success. Just as an example, the state of Oregon puts out a tourism-based document every year, or every two years, I think it is, that shows the impact of tourism in the area, and they break it out by regions. Our region is the central Oregon coast. And the gross room revenue that, actually, I'm sorry, this is, this we receive monthly. The gross room revenue that we receive for 2017 was just around $80 million, okay? What's important is both the money, the dollar amount, but also the trend, okay? And so you can see, since 2011, we have had a steady increase of the gross room revenue. That translates directly into the transit room tax that we receive. We receive 9.5% of this.
Ron, is that, is this the state numbers, or our numbers?
These are, these come through the state, but they are our numbers.
Our numbers.
Yeah, these are, these are Lincoln City lodging.
So, but I think it's important to point out, then, in 2014, there is an addition of growth and...
Yes.
...trend growth, so we added more growth, so that's part of that, but it continues on.
It certainly is. And one of the, and for 2018, we have our third, in the packet here, it's, it shows through the second quarter, we have received the third quarter, I didn't copy it in here, but we're about 9% above where we were last year. The fourth quarter should be coming out in just a little bit of time. Okay? The activities that Explore Lincoln City does to be able to achieve their mission is advertising, public relations, trade shows, events, economic development, and the culinary center. And you can see what the breakdown is. Forty-eight percent of the resources that are allocated to Explore Lincoln, or Explore Lincoln City goes to advertising. Eleven percent goes to the culinary center, seven percent goes to economic development, sixteen to events, seven percent to trade shows, and 10% to public relations. Let's talk a little bit about advertising. We use multiple ways of advertising, through print, out of home. Ed, will you take just five seconds to say what out of home is?
It's outdoor advertising. That's everything from outdoor boards to the vinyl wrap trains we have up in Portland, to the cityscape, painted building sites that we do, so it's all of that.
We do video, radio, and social media are all the forms of the advertising that we do. I think most everybody's familiar with our Seven Miles of Smile campaign. That is being retired and wrapped up. We have a new campaign that was based on work that was recently done, and the first part of that is our Finders Keepers celebration of 20 years of Finders Keepers. And all of the different formats that are outlined here, you're seeing that is going forward, okay? For example, we've got an Instagram, we've got train wraps, billboard, and so forth.
On that billboard, what's it say, Explore at the top right? What does it say?
Explore Lincoln City. Interestingly enough, in your packet, I won't go into much detail on this, measures of success for the floats is the registration of it, and you can see the data that is associated with that, the total number of floats that we put down, the ones that were registered. A big key for measuring the success of Explore Lincoln City is in all they do, how many people outside of 50 miles from here are impacted by this, okay? In other words, we don't want to give away floats to Lincoln City residents, we want to give to those who are coming in as tourists. The next is public relations, that's the next activity under public relations. You will see these in your weekly reports regularly, but they're all links. These are the unpaid advertising, they're the publications that we see, they're the links that we'll see in newspapers, magazines, and so forth. And the way we measure those is by the value of that advertising if we had to pay for it. And so you can see on the bottom right, again, we've had a steady increase in the value of the advertising that we have received. Some of the places where we've seen that has been Smithsonian Magazine, some have been local, and just throughout, wherever we were able to get it. The name of the magazine that Oregon Travel uses?
That Oregon Travel uses?
Yeah.
1859.
1859, thank you, 1859. So, that's another activity that we use to try to accomplish the mission of Explore Lincoln City. We have trade shows and events. Under the trade shows, there's four trade shows that we participate in, the Portland Women's Expo, travel, World's Conference, the Pacific Northwest Sportsman's Show, Portland International Auto Show, and this is a cooperative with the casino. Again, in your packet, I won't go into detail with it, you can see the factors that we use to determine whether or not we should participate in the trade show. Measures of success we use in that are inquiries at the booth, engagement at the booth, and swag that is given away. The next is economic development. Oh, events, we're still in events, I'm sorry. The city has been, Explore Lincoln City has been shifting the way we do events, not the number of events. In the past, the city has pretty much exclusively done the events. Over the last four years, we've tried to host events in partnership, where we would be almost like an incubator program, we would help to start them, and after a few years, we would back away from those, and they should be able to carry on their own. We've seen some successes, like Torrida Difor, and we've seen some that have dropped off, like the Chatter and Bird Fest, when we packed the way out of that chamber, decided that we no longer pursued that. There is one big question, a big policy question, it's before you tonight, that we wanted to tape a few minutes and talk about, and that is surfing. Have you heard from two rival surfers, surfing event holders, for the, let me give you a little bit of background, Ed, you can jump in any time and give a little bit more information. We own a park, Canyon Park, which every surfer and every surfing organization has told us is key to hosting a surfing event. Canyon Park, there's something about that park, I think it's ease of access, that creates it just perfect for the Nelscott Reef Surf. We do not control the beach, and we do not control the ocean. The beach is controlled by the state of Oregon through the Parks Department, their Parks Department, and the ocean is controlled by the state or by the coast guard, depending on how far out it is. We have a permitting process for events that aren't on any regular, specific day, but are going to be held sometime within a timeframe. So, under these surfing events, when the Nelscott Reef Surf is ready to go, there's only about three days before it can be called, the surfers will come and do their thing. So because of that, we have developed a permitting system that grants a permit for several months, and they will be able to reserve that park. A permit is to reserve the park, and the parking lot, it's not a permit to host the event, it's to reserve the park for that event. And so we're able to give that. We also have in our ordinance, and we've been doing this, and you heard this a little bit last night, of a possibility of a rival event where there is a first right of refusal. So in other words, if I give permit to Counselor Casper to host an event, I can give a second permit to Counselor Hinton, Counselor Casper has the first right of refusal. If she doesn't call for the event, then Counselor Hinton can then call the event and have it. The difficulty we've been finding is that surfers don't get along. They don't like each other, and they're very territorial, and they go from zero to 60 in their emotions in less than a second. And as much as we have tried over the last four years to stay out of it, and just only say we're renting you the park, we have not been able to do that. Each year, we have been dragged into it to act as a referee between competing surfing For the city, there is some benefit to a surfing event, not necessarily on the day of the event, because it's not, it's not something we can really market well, because we don't know how, when it's going to be held, we just know it's going to be held at some time. However, after the fact, it creates some really wonderful photo ops and marketing opportunities to say, this is a great place to go surfing, it's a way to showcase our The question that we, the policy question that we really wanted to bring up to you, for you to consider, we're not expecting you to answer anything tonight, we wanted to bring it up for consideration, is should we host a surf, should we take over and host a surfing event? It becomes a Lincoln City Corporation event, in which we would not grant permits to anybody else but ourselves to host, okay? Now, it's not something the staff has necessarily wanted to pursue, it's one that we feel we've been forced into considering, because we keep getting dragged into the middle and trying to be, trying to become, being that, holding as referees. The idea that we have been working with is that we also don't want to run this event, because we're not equipped to run the event. I would know no more on calling a surfing event as I would on knowing how to deliver a vacation. And so, what we would, the idea that we're working with is that we would put out a request for proposal, and that proposal would be good for three to five years, in which someone, individuals or organizations could apply to run the event on our behalf. Now, as I have checked with other communities, or had our staff check with other communities, they're getting paid for this. The privilege of hosting it is something similar to in naming a bill, where there's some few thousand dollars that are actually paid to the city for the privilege of exclusively being the ones that are hosting. All permitting, almost, almost all marketing, and everything else would be done by the successful applicant of the request for proposal. What we would give in return is the use of our name, Lincoln City, Nelscott Event, and some marketing, especially the marketing afterwards, where Ed's staff can use this as a way to really promote the community. We have not really thought it through long enough to get all, work all of those things out. I don't even know if this would actually end the fight, other than it might end it for about a four-year period until we do an RFP again. And so, so that's the policy question that we wanted to present to you guys today, and have you think about this, and my hope is that on your February 9th retreat, it's a discussion that we could have, where we might be able to get a little direction from where we'd like to go.
I'm just wondering, are you considering maybe putting together a little work if you were interested? I think this is a fabulous opportunity.
We could. We have not thought it all that way through, we're still in the very much the concept stage, so that's certainly a possibility.
I think it's a big deal for Lincoln City. It could be even a better deal. If we considered it an event, even if it's only three days after you do something a few times, pop-up events. I can see it, because I was at, I went to go out and watch it, it was pretty fabulous. And it works in other places, like you were saying, so there's some, something I think would be gleaned from other locations.
Now, one of the things that we have noticed is that so far this year, nobody has called an event. The two permit holders have not called an event. However, I've been called, the air police have been called, because surfers are just coming to use the beach. It's a beautiful day, the surf's up, from Astoria down to Coos Bay, there's apparently a pretty good information tree, a great vine that goes through, and they say, hey, it's a great day, let's go up to Lincoln City and go surfing. One of the difficulties we've been finding is that is being interpreted as a surfing event, and these rival groups will put on their Facebook page, their blogs, their advertisement, that, you know, we had a great day at the beach, and so it makes it feel as though there was, there was an event. And so, like I said, it's, there is some, I think there's some potential for, for some real benefit to the city, the area. Where we do get getting hurt is the constant fighting, it just sucks the oxygen out of everything. Most of our staff, I think, would just kind of push it off and go away, because it's just been very difficult, but we are what we are. Yes, sir.
So, a few, lots of things. With those two permit holders, do they disallow any other parking to be held at them? Either of those parking lots?
The parking is exclusive.
So whenever they go and call it, they will block off the parking?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, if there's, if the last four years that we have known about this opportunity, have we at all participated in any capacity with this already?
I don't think so.
So have you said anything, have you said anything, has the city said anything about surfing officially?
The VCC committee, since I've been here on two occasions, have granted John Force funding for the event. Before I got here, John's rival, Adam Wagner, was awarded the event, and one was conducted here. But I don't have any staff members that were around at that time that participated in it.
Okay, so now, that there's been four years of fighting, now we're saying, oh hey, now the city's, here's where, here's what it really comes to. The local surfers don't want any part of it at all. And we haven't had local surfers come up and say how they feel, because they've felt burned from the city and from the organization, the bickering, everything that goes on behind it is going on, and it's hurt them. And so here, we haven't done any, we, the city, haven't done anything at all, and now we want to say, hey, let's put on a surfing event, I think it's going to be a slap in the face, to the local surf community, and saying, hey, you're right, you guys, it's been terrible, and now here we are, let's do this. I think, and you will probably find a lot of yeses, is that we don't issue anything at all, next year at all, and just let it sit. Don't have any contests, seriously. I would really suggest you guys to go out to the local surfing community. If you don't have the surf shops in town wanting to participate in either Gabe's or John's event, then you have a problem. You're going to promote Lincoln City as the surfing community, except none of the surf shops are part of it, it's not going to go well. And so it's really heated, and it's a really passionate thing, and it isn't about money, and it isn't about anything. This is this whole other thing with actual surfers. I understand, you know, Gabe's very passionate, he came in, John's very passionate, they came in, they both have these things going on, except neither of those, you know, are the local current surfers who are out there every day, and it's not a grapevine of information. There's a lot of data, and a lot of statistics, and a lot of weather mapping, and following these things. I mean, it's a serious thing. I mean, these, this is a lifestyle, and I think it would be terrible to do that to them, and just take it from them like that.
Well, that's what I was saying, I think if we have worked on it, because I can see where the city can play a role in that.
Sure, but not right now.
And we have support from John, today, asking for the city to take.
If you had, I would really, listen, I'm just saying, also, there's a lot of stuff going on, and it's a very serious thing, and if you don't have the people, the actual surfers involved, and, hey, yeah, come on, Lincoln City, look at that, because it's a thing, and John Force aside and Gabe aside.
That's why I say that. If you also say the contest, or the events, are dependent upon the weather and the surf, well, you might not know when it's going to happen, so how could you promote it?
I don't know.
Or get a permit? It's sort of instantaneous.
It happens on three days' notice, some years, there is no way.
I mean, it would be frivolous, I would think, to even try to put your finger on it.
Well, we couldn't, we don't have the expertise in-house. I mean, we'd have to, like Ron said, do an RFP, identify some person or organization that we felt had, and there's a lot of components. I mean, there's the safety crew you have to have, you need to be able to communicate with the surfers, you ideally have a relationship with the big guys that are famous, that, you know, would make it worthwhile. And to Riley's point, if you go back and look at that old movie that was done about John and whatever, there is tension between, do you bring in the World Surf League guys, or do you let the local surfers use it as a local resource? And it's...
There's been burning, that's the whole thing, like, there's been people like, what Gabe brought the jersey, and it had to whiten out because of other things. I mean, there's a lot of stuff. I mean, there's a lot of stuff there. It's really, it's convoluted.
But, but the, but the first year I was here, I tried really hard to work with the various parties that were interested in it, and about the only thing that happened was I lost a couple of months of my time. I mean, it was, it was embarrassing.
And it's, and it's really like, it's to even, for me to even have that information from the surfing community is a big trust thing, even to just talk to me was a big deal. And he's like, look, if I didn't know you, I wouldn't even tell you, because you guys had burned us.
Yeah.
Who's fees are, like, an idea?
People that, well, I'm, I hope to be able to bring, hope to be able to bring, like, sign, these are these people, you know, that, that's, that's the way it goes, because it's, that's how they feel.
And the big wave thing isn't the only surfing that happens here. You have the, you have the kite surfers, there's, there's a lot of surfing that doesn't happen over the reef down in, down in Nelskott.
Absolutely.
And, you know, I've been to Pacific City for the longboard competition, the one down in Glen Eden Beach, and, you know, there's, there's a lot. There's also stuff other than just that one wave that we could do.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. It's a, it's one of the reasons we're an octopus.
It has many textures.
Because you went to the bad. Hey, that's the logo, which, which by the way, never mind, I'll tell you later.
Keep going.
Yeah. Again, with my intent is to bring this back up during your priority session, give you some, a little more direction as to how you would like to proceed. Economic development in the Culinary Center. Economic development happens two ways in, through Explore Lincoln City. One is through the marketing. The other is through grants that give it to, to different organizations. We're seeing something interesting by the VCC. In the past, the grants have almost exclusively been for events, and, and they really targeted the marketing end of events. You're seeing an interest on their part on using those grants for tourist-related businesses, for improvements that you might see that would, would help enhance their tourism. This has been a partnership with Urban Renewal, and the two that want to target are, as I just mentioned, is old line lanes, where they received a grant to help fix their, their bowling lines, and the Bishu Theater, which was a facade improvement and improvements on the inside such as the seating and the painting of the facility. As a matter of fact, the last year, in Celebrate Lincoln and the Lind Counties, we received an award as the best business private, I'm sorry, public-private partnership for this. The other area that we're moving into is really a change, this has been coming over some time, on what, on what we do with the Culinary Center. In the past, the Culinary Center was essentially operated to be like a restaurant. When, and I both came on board, there was some real, there was some serious consideration of whether or not the Culinary Center would even continue. What we have done is to change the nature of the Culinary Center so that it becomes a marketing tool, instead of trying to act like a restaurant. We're still hosting classes, demonstrations that are very, very successful. We increased the fees on those, almost double the fees, and we haven't lost any customers on those, so that has worked out well. But we've also now created where we're going into the video market of Beachside Bites. The intent of that is to feature the local restaurants, so that when people are seeing this on YouTube, Facebook, our webpage, whatever it might be, they're not necessarily thinking of the Culinary Center, they're thinking of the bottom of those, which is one that we featured, Bay House, which is one we featured, M L Line Lines, which is the third one that we featured. We're finding that our reach is much more successful in the course of one month, the reach that we received through YouTube, the Beachside Bites exceeded what we've been able to do in three to four months through the, through the demonstrations.
Do you have a, have you, do you have a signup sheet?
A signup sheet for...
To be included in Beachside Bites?
Uh, we filmed the first 12 episodes, the original can, we're watching the numbers right now. We're assuming that we'll budget for another run next year, but I, I want to see numbers first, so we can...
Do we know what the restaurants are going to be?
Pardon?
Do we know the restaurants we'll feature? How do we just determine the restaurants?
We, the first time was a hard, so, we had a hard time getting three restaurants to come forward, and we, we film it like it's a game show. We get an audience together, we get the stage occupied, and we'll film four episodes per setup, because it takes a lot of money to do the setup. We had to go out and beat the bushes and ask people to come in. Now that it's been out there and on the air and people have seen it, we've got people banging on the door wanting in. The casino's like, why weren't we one of them? It's like, you told me no, you know, that's a long story. It is true that. And, but no, we, we have folks wanting to get in now, and my hope was that the demand would more exceed our ability to...
So your reach, your, your one-month reach over four-month reach isn't enough for you to continue doing it?
Uh, we haven't launched all the episodes yet, and I want to make sure we know what we're doing, and we went down the wrong path, the right path, rather, that, you know, the way we're doing the, the shows and the programming. One of the things that seems to be coming out right now is that the closer we get to a how-to video, like the one with the bowling alley, where it's like, here's how we make our fried chicken, and they walk you through it step by step, is head and shoulders above the bay house, where the guy's like, here's how we arrange the food on the plate to make it look pretty, you know. I, I, and keep in mind, the first time, it wasn't our nickel to a great extent. I did that on a grant we got from Travel Oregon. Next time's our nickel. And I want to make sure that when we spend the money, we're doing it in a way that's going to give us the biggest bang for the buck. We don't even have all 12 episodes out there yet, and I really wanted to let it percolate a while and make sure we know what we're doing, and only put the money toward the stuff that works.
Do you have a schedule that you're releasing them?
Yeah. Yeah, every, every two weeks, a new episode comes out.
So how many are out right now?
You asked me that, I think we're up to episode seven out of 12. Yeah. But, you know, I...
Are you budgeting it for this coming budget season?
Right now, yeah, we haven't laid in, not as much money as we spent last time, because this time it's all my money, and not a big chunk from Travel Oregon. But finally, on this, all of this, all of this, the most important part of this is our measures of success. Bring you back to where we started. This is the impact it has on the economy of our community generally, and specifically the impact it has on us for transient rate taxes. So all of these things, all of these activities should point to those levels of, to those measures of success. Yeah, one other facet that isn't up there with the Culinary Center, we used to have the cook-offs, and we went out and talked to the restaurants that participated and whatnot, and it was amazing, they universally hated the cook-offs. You know, they were guaranteed to lose money even if they won. One restaurant, we declared as having the best whatever, which meant everybody else's was of lesser quality, they hated that. And we, we pretty much had to beg people to participate. So we're looking, and we preserve the money to do them, that's still in the budget, and what we want, we've been looking for a replacement for the cook-offs. And what we've come up with is kind of a week-long restaurant week, where we feature an item, we use an event in the Culinary Center to showcase that item, and we learned something else again. We thought we handled every objection that the restaurants had. We found a way to funnel in more money, everybody's going to come out whole, it is not a competition, we showcase everybody, we bring in a videographer, we do videos on it and put it out like we're doing with Beachside Bites, still couldn't get anybody to sign up. And it turned out that to be a featured restaurant, to have the item in your restaurant that we're going to feature, well, not, not a problem, we love that, please do it, shut down your restaurant, which most of them have to do because they're so thinly staffed, you know, put a close sign on the front door, and come into the Culinary Center for a day to do this event nonstop. So we've changed it to where we are not having an event in the Culinary Center, we're going to do a demo with the featured item, and then there's going to be a week-long restaurant week in Lincoln City, and thus far, they love it. First one's going to happen in March, and we're going to use that as a template to go back and ask Travel Oregon for more money and do it in a bigger and better way. So what we're trying to do again is to take the Culinary Center, let that be the hub, let that be the publicity item, but then have things in town flow from there. So much, much different than what we used to do. And, you know, we still stop our toe once in a while, guess wrong on what we think might work for the restaurants, but when we do, we try to find out why, and then build something that does work.
So how does that work? You do your Culinary Center demo, and then what, just say at every, at a different day or night, a different restaurant would be?
No. Okay, the first one we're going to do, and one of the, one of the objections we tried to answer was ingredient cost and whatever, just wanted to make it dirt simple, still have it fun, it's going to be called Mac and Seas. So everybody's going to have a macaroni and cheese dish, which is not a big ask, and they're going to doctor it and make it fancy however they want. And rather than have an event in the Culinary Center where we're jamming three, 400 people in there, we're just going to do it as a regular demo. The money we make on the demo is going to go to the food bank. And we're going to video that and use that to promote. Plus, we'll have the video crew go up and down Lincoln City and interview chefs and restaurants, and do a showcase video series that's going to promote the event. So rather than try to do a thing where we physically gather a whole lot of people in the Culinary Center and require restaurants to be in the Culinary Center to make it work, we're going to use that as the video hub, and then go out and do additional video up and downtown and promote it that way.
How does that video get to the market?
Someplace else that we're learning. We pushed really hard on Facebook to do the, the initial run on Beachside Bites. Interesting thing on Facebook, you know how they auto-roll as you're scrolling down and reading stuff, and if that auto-roll goes for more than three seconds, it's a view on Facebook. So we started getting crazy numbers, like, oh, you've reached, you know, a million point five people and blah, 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 and I'm looking at average view time and it's 10 seconds, I think there's something wrong here. What we're learning is, if you want somebody to invest a lot of time to watch a video, it's not Facebook. You can get a lot of just glance numbers, but if you actually want somebody to make the commitment, sit down and watch it, YouTube right now is the place to be. So we're going to be working to enhance our YouTube base. Right now, we have a whopping 145 subscribers to our channel, and that's because we've never done anything with it. So we're going to be using Beachside Bites to build up the number of subscribers.
Can you do that through Facebook, though?
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can point them toward. The problem with Facebook is that YouTube's owned by Google, and if you point somebody toward a YouTube video, Facebook meters you down to where you don't reach that many people. I mean, it's, it's a weird game out there.
So, for those of you...
Yeah, exactly.
For those of you who are familiar with a violinist named Lindsey Stirling, I think she had, how many, how many subscribers to her, like 11 million dollars more than that?
It was a lot, yeah.
Yeah, it was in the multi-millions. We've told her that is his goal.
But, you know, when it comes to a lot of this stuff, you know, we're, we're, we're doing baby steps right now, and we're, we're learning how to use the medium. Video is still something that's very new to us, and if you want to build that subscriber base, if you want to see it, I'd be happy with, you know, 50,000, let alone 11 million. You have to have regular content, and we're learning how to do that. And Beachside Bites is a step in the right direction, the Mac and Seas videos is another step in the right direction. We've got some other stuff in the pipeline, but we, we need to be running a little TV station on top of everything else, the way things are going today.
But Ken, I, I noticed under events, one of your measures of success is to stay traffic counting. I don't see any charts, I haven't ever seen any charts or anything about that traffic counting. And my opinion would be that should be, could be used all through these, you know, rather than just events, if, at least that's how I'm interpreting this, events, because one of the, you know, I take it back to where there's traffic congestion, or, you know, just the more common focus of water usage, you know, why is water down, going through the plant issue versus last year? TRT is up, you know, is it rates or is it people? And so I, I would encourage you, I'd like to see more traffic since we, if we can find, maybe that's the answer that you're going to tell me, is it's not that good.
It, it's a lot better than it was. You go back a year and a half, two years ago, the meters would break down, and, I mean, the, the, what we got was, was kind of spotty. We, we used to get crazy numbers, Kite Festival, where the state would come out and said, well, based on the car count on the thing we had there, you've had, you had 35,000 people go to Summer Kite Festival, and I used to be in the theme park business, I know what a crowd like, that big is like, and there's just no way, I'm sorry, that number just never rang true. Well, it turns out that what we were seeing were the people circling, looking for a parking space, where I think they were counting each car like six or seven times.
We're, we're talking about different traffic counters. There, there's a traffic counter at the north end, and traffic counter at Dirt Creek.
Right.
Not, you know, I don't care about these around in town. So to me, it would be, you know, pulling off those numbers to say they've come down 18, 19, 20.
Yeah, we have those. Now, the, the holy grail for me is, I don't know, how many are coming in and how many are going out?
Right, and we've staged that on purpose.
Yeah, but they, we don't have that. They can tell us how many times they got clicked, but they can't give me inbound and outbound, which drives me crazy. And Liz has been asking for a year now.
Well, that's good to know, because we, we worked the deal with ODOT to get those for that purpose, so if something's not...
Do we, we would need two more cameras then, essentially? One to go inbound onto the north and south, and one going outbound onto the north and south.
Because I, I would love to know in net, how many people are just flowing through, how many people are actually stopping?
If you have one going, it's not going to know which way to go.
No, we, we have used that, that data. When, when we worked with Allison and the, the RFEI was put out for the nine properties that were for sale, there was a little section in the front there that kind of romances the town a little bit, and we used the, the traffic counters to say that Highway 101, if you're on one of the properties that's visible to the highway, there were 8.8 million cars every year, vehicles that go by your property, and that equates to 22 million people that you have a shot at. You know, that's, you know, those numbers are valuable.
That's the kind of stuff I'm looking forward to. I think we've got to remind folks, you know, why is there traffic congestion, is because there are more cars. And, you know, one would think that's a logical answer, but it helps with the numbers that just show. And then, as you said, it's one of your measurements of success on events, it's of particular days, but quite frankly, if we're not getting good data, you know, that would be, that's helpful to know.
The data is much, much better, and it's just, I, I would love to get net data, how many people are actually stopping, how many people are leaving, and, and to date, we've not been able to pull that.
So I have some more questions. The Mac and Seas, you're eliminating probably two-thirds of the restaurants that don't serve Mac and Seas, right? So Thai's not going to have macaroni and cheese, Spanish food's not, probably not going to have Mac and Cheese.
Oh, but the Timey Up's doing it.
As a regular, okay, so one out of the four restaurants, great. What other things do you have planned to encourage the other restaurants? Do you have something else? Because, you know, not all, not all of them are...
Yeah, this is, this is, this is the first one out of the chute. We will have other things, we're learning how to do it.
Sure.
And, and Donna tried to create something with a very low bar that would be easy to come in and do. E-Dogs has some kind of crazy macaroni and cheese hot dog the guy's putting together. I mean, there's, there's a lot of fun stuff out there that people are coming up with. And does it encompass everyone? No. Is it easy to maybe for a week or two, add something based on that? Yeah, it actually is.
And I challenge your 10-second view rate on your Facebook, is that the first 10 seconds aren't engaging enough, and it shows you how long they're willing to watch it for. aren't engaging enough and it shows you how long they're willing to watch it for. And then if you were, if you were to compare it to more popular videos, what are those 10 seconds? Instead of saying, oh, Facebook's not the place, my video isn't good enough in that first 10 seconds to engage them for the full seven minutes long.
Now, I, I pulled numbers that are Facebook averages and they're not too far off from what we're seeing with Beachside Bites. And it isn't, I'm watching for two seconds and I'm outta here. It's the way Facebook is recording. The pre-roll in my mind does not count at all and, and it's that one or, it's that, and no, they count three seconds and above as a view. So, if you're reading down your page, not even looking at where that video is and it rolls for three or four seconds and you scroll up and it goes away, you gotta count it as a view. So, my, my heartburn with Facebook to some extent is just their reporting and how they do it. They're, they're giving me numbers that...
But it still isn't good enough for them to watch it. The point regardless, however it is recorded, they're not watching it for more than three seconds.
Yeah, but they are on YouTube.
You have a click-through rate for those three seconds to YouTube?
We have, we have things that point people to YouTube.
Does your click-through batch, your 3% video match your YouTube views?
It's bad? Okay, you embed?
It's a yes or no.
No, no, it's, it's apples and oranges. If you embed a YouTube video on Facebook, YouTube, or Facebook will throttle you down. They don't want you going to YouTube. For you to get a decent view rate on Facebook, you have to embed the video on Facebook and let Facebook host it.
Sure.
So, nobody from Facebook is going to YouTube.
I don't, I don't understand why there's a difficulty with this. If you can, if you have the video, you can post it in two places.
I do.
So, then I just don't, I just don't see, so they're not gonna watch it on Facebook and then go to YouTube and I, and still, I don't understand. And I still believe that the first 10 seconds aren't engaging enough.
Facebook hates Google.
That has nothing, has nothing to do with the person watching the video though. That has nothing to do, I don't know, people aren't at home like, screw Facebook.
Yeah, I've got a, I've got a three-minute view time on, on YouTube. People that find that on YouTube watch it. So, you know, I don't, I don't think there's an inherent problem with the video, it's just the medium that we chose for the biggest distribution point was probably the wrong medium. So, again, the law of the material that you have, if you have any questions, feel free to give us a call, send us an email, text and we can respond to those. Just, the biggest thing for us is that the activities that we do point to the measures of success. And I'll get you some of the graphs we've done on the traffic counts to show you what we're looking at.
Yeah, I, I just wanna help if, if you're getting bad at that.
I noticed the mission statement wasn't on yours. Is it still 200 words?
I think we've it down to at least one word. Okay. Library, Driftwood Public Library. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. The mission of the Driftwood Public Library is to provide open access to diverse popular and informational materials, technologies and programs for the entire community. Two years ago, I think it was that the Driftwood Public Library adopted a strategic plan. There are four elements of that with things that go with it. In your packet are the things that go with it. I've just highlighted the, the top part is the first is to support lifelong learning for all ages. The second is to develop the library as a resource hub connecting underserved populations with information they need. The third is enhance the, I'm sorry, foster community engagement and collaboration. And the fourth is enhance library technology to meet 21st century patrons' needs. So, all of the activities that the library is involved with go to that strategic plan, which is ultimately goes to the fulfillment of their mission. They have, I'm sorry, six activities that support the strategic plan. They are circulation.
Those are the measurements, I think.
Oh, I missed it. I put the wrong thing in, sorry about that. They are circulation, reference services, adult services, youth services, outreach services and volunteers. And Kirsten, can you just take a moment and just mention what each of those are?
Sure. So, circulation, that's kind of, that's library lingo, but it's what we refer to as kind of the basic services of the library, checking things in and out, facilitating people checking things in and out. So, the library staff that works primarily at the front counter is part of circulation and also that involves the preparation that the materials go through before they are made available to the community. Reference services are the services provided to library patrons who need research assistance or technology help. We do a lot of one-on-one technology help. Some examples of that are, we have Technology Tuesday, one-on-one slots where people can sign up to get help. We also do assisted off-site technology classes at North End Senior Solutions and Lake Shore and some of the other facilities in the area. And all of our, this is where we also put our online research databases that we subscribe to and our reference books. Adult services are the library programs and materials that we are specifically aiming at adult library patrons and this is kind of where we class things like our author series events, the materials that we've purchased for the, for adults in the community, DVDs, books, things like that. Youth services are similarly, they're the services that are directed at children, teens. This includes our summer reading program, our early literacy programs, storytimes, things of that nature.
Can I ask you?
Sure.
I noticed there's a door counter on that kid's room.
Yeah.
Do you ever use that data for anything?
That door counter no longer works.
Oh.
So, we don't really, we don't...
Did you ever use that information for anything?
It was always not, you know, we tried to, but it didn't work very well, cause kids like to dance in the doorway.
I still always wondered, like, every time I'd see there's some kid just spinning around in circles.
Basically, we had an extra door counter, so we thought we'd try to find out if we could get something useful out of that and, no.
I will always wonder.
Same problem they had with the cards.
Very similar. And then outreach services is our homebound services, so our services to patrons who can no longer come to the library, so we bring the library to them, we deliver books and DVDs and other materials to them. We act as a liaison for the State Library's Talking Books Program and Braille Services, so we can help people get set up for those things. And then the other portion of outreach services is really about finding ways to bring the library out into the community and that might be appearing at events, you know, doing things like the National Night Out. It also involves actually, you know, promoting ourselves to historically underserved portions of our population as well. So, we've focused a lot on Spanish speakers, people who are living in poverty, people who are experiencing homelessness, things of that nature.
Kind of libraries.
Yes, the little, the little free libraries, there's a picture of one of them right there.
We just filled it up.
Yeah, that's great. And then the last is our volunteer services and this is kind of like almost an internal service for the library. The volunteers are, make up, we estimate, if we didn't have the volunteers, we would need to increase our staff by probably two and a half FTE to account for the hours that volunteers spend in the library. They do all of the processing of new books, so putting covers on, putting the labels on, all of that stuff. And then also all of the shelving is performed by volunteers. So, that, those are our, our main categories there.
Measures of success. Now, the library is a little more difficult than Explore Lincoln City because there's a lot of qualitative measurements on there. And so, we've looked at the types of ways we can measure that both qualitatively and quantitatively. And Kirsten's identified the following are ways in which we can measure that. First is circulation, which is checkouts. Second, our library cards issued, foot traffic, program attendance, patron satisfaction or patron, positive patron feedback and successful transactions, volunteer retention rates and volunteer satisfaction. On those that are really qualitative such as satisfaction, there's a couple ways. There's anecdotaling in the conversations that the librarians have with their patrons. They also will put out from time to time, surveys to get information back from them.
I actually brought with me an example of a report generated from some of the surveys that we conducted. What we did in this case is we did follow-up with some of our adult, kind of, we call them lifelong learning type programs, where they're things like prep programs, offer events, stuff like that. And we asked them afterward questions like, will you, do you plan on applying what you learned? Did you learn something that was helpful? Did you become more aware of the library? And, and these are, this is a chart showing some of the responses that we received. And this is something where we're, we're trying to get into a habit of evaluating our programs in this manner on a very regular basis so that we can get an increasing amount of good data.
How is this done?
So, we take a survey at the end of the program, we ask folks to fill it out, we have set questions that we ask and then we enter the data into this tool called Project Outcome.
Is it sample size of how many?
This is, this is two programs that we test, that we surveyed. I believe we had seven survey respondents, so, you know...
Oh, total?
Yeah, it's a pretty small sample size.
Oh, I thought it was, I misunderstood that. Thank you.
It is a pretty small, small sample size, but it's something that we've just recently started doing and it's gonna be very helpful for us.
So, with all of the activities that they're, that the library is involved with, again, these are the measures of success that we are using. We only put two years of data because I didn't ask Kirsten to go through and put all of the rest of it together, although she has and we just looked at the last two years with that. In our discussions, there are some interesting trends. These aren't necessarily, we don't really have a lot of, of policy items to discuss, but there are some interesting trends that we're seeing. And, and I've asked Kirsten to talk a little bit about them. One is called the just-in-time versus the just-in-case. This I think is really significant.
Yeah, so this is kind of a, this is a shift in how a lot of libraries are viewing our services. You know, we're, we're primarily a popular library, so our biggest goal is to provide people with things that they want and things that they need and, you know, we kind of, we let a lot of the community interest drive that. But when we are looking at evaluating, say, resources that we might purchase for the library, whether it's books or online databases or things like that, we tend to look at, is there a benefit to having this just in case someone needs it versus are we okay to say, well, we don't have it on hand, but we can get it for you if you need it? And this is where our partnership with Newport Library and the Tillamook County Library really comes into play as long, as well as our partnerships with other libraries in the state, because we can really leverage our budget by saying, okay, well, maybe we don't need the specific $300 reference books because we know that they have it in Tillamook and they'll be willing to send it down and let somebody here use it. Or, you know, we can get another copy of that bestseller from another library and, or maybe there's something that's kind of esoteric that we don't think our patrons are going to need to have right there just in case, but we can get it for them.
I had an odd neat career Chicago manual of style about a year ago and came down from Tillamook and it was very helpful.
And then, of course, there are some things where you, we wanna make sure that we have them readily available no matter what. Where the decision-making comes in is what are those materials?
Couple of other things that we wanted to discuss is, is again, in looking at how we measure our success, one of the ways is measuring against ourselves, that's time. How do we compare from year to year in our circulation rates and our program attendance and everything else? That's a very effective measuring tool. But it doesn't necessarily tell you is what should you be at? And that's where comparison's become a big part of it. And so, a couple of things that, that library's working on is that a ranking system of the city to other OLA standards and a benchmarking for program attendance.
So, the Oregon Library Association recently, and I was actually part of the committee that created these, recently published new standards for public libraries in Oregon. And these are basically its benchmarks that libraries can meet to be considered, you know, acceptable versus excellent and moving up the ranks. So, one of the projects that I'm working on now is now that those standards have been finalized, is I'm working through those standards to see how our library ranks. Are we an exemplary library?
Yes.
I think we are. In the past, we've done very well on the, in how we, in how we meet the standards, we're very, a very good library. So, I'll be happy to see how that works out. And the other thing is that because every year I submit statistical reports to the State Library, they then publish rankings of all the libraries in the state and it's actually like this enormous Excel spreadsheet. So, I can go in and see how my library's performing in comparison to libraries with similar budgets, similar population sizes, things like that. So, that's very helpful to us as well.
And the benefit of all of this is that as you guys consider the allocation of your resources, which is ultimately what this comes down to, is how are you going to allocate your resources? Not only can you see and look at the performance, but you can also identify where you think they should be. Are we right where we should be? Should we be doing a little bit better? Are the activities that we're doing leading to that? And so, it gives us really a wonderful way to evaluate how well we're doing, how much farther we need to do to meet the goals, the, the mission that we have, the strategic plan that we have. So, I think you'll find these to be incredibly useful tools as, as the library continues to put it together. The other part is a very interesting discussion that we have. You'll notice that the circulation, which is the one in the center, the checkout, is increased significantly, but the type of circulation is changing and it's really a fascinating change. Libraries over the years, I had been, I had served on a committee that looked at libraries today and in the future. And of anything the cities does, libraries are the ones that are probably changing the most. They're so dynamic because technology is affecting what we do, how we do it, when we do it and everything else. And so, I wanted Kirsten just take a moment and discuss with you what you discussed with me on trends we're seeing in circulation.
Sure. So, one of the trends that we're seeing is definitely as your ebook circulation is increasing, but the other trend that we're seeing is that people, as ebook circulation increases, people are using the library for, as a community space. So, I think that in the future, what we're going to see is not necessarily that libraries are shrinking physically, but that the physical holdings of the library, the stacks are probably going to shrink and the community spaces available to, will probably grow. One of the really interesting things I just read today is there was a study done in Philadelphia of millennials who use the library. And millennials are more likely than anybody else in Philadelphia to have a library card, but of the populations who have library cards, they're least likely to check out books and the most likely to be using the library. So, they're using the library, but they're not necessarily checking out books and taking them home. They're, they're coming to the library, they're doing research, they're, they're using, you know, the space and the wifi and they're very big proponents of the libraries that like them, but they're using them in ways that are, it's definitely a shift from what we're seeing with the fives.
I wanna ask if I could a question about the computer use up there? Is it constant?
What we're seeing is that our, the use of our public, our PCs that people can use, it's still very steady. it's still very steady, but it's not nearly as, there's not nearly as much competition for them as there have been in the past. It used to be that we'd have people waiting in line. And now we've actually been able, in most cases, we can extend time for folks who are using it. You know, there's not nearly as many people waiting. And what we attribute to that is a lot more people have their own laptops and other devices, and they bring them in and use our wifi. And one of the things I'm working with Bill from IT on is that we'd like to get a better sense of actual use of, you know, how many people are logging on to use the wifi. Right now, we can tell how many connections are made, but that since that includes every person who walks in with a cellphone in their pocket, it's not as, you know, it's a million, you know? So, but what we would like to see.
Everybody up here can connect.
Exactly, exactly. So, yeah, I'm investigating some ways that we can get some better numbers on how many people are actually, you know, sitting down and using wireless a lot of the way.
I have another question too, which is about students and how you keep up with what they need to be reading for their curriculum.
Well, we, we spend a lot of time making connections with teachers and with the school district to make sure that we're carrying the books that they're studying, the topics. We had a really great opportunity, last year we were awarded the Refreshing Youth Collections Grant, which let us purchase $3,000 worth of new materials for basically birth through teen. And we were able to pick from, from lists of award winners and things like that, buy some things for our collection. And this fall, I was buttonholed by one of the teachers at Nescun Valley School. He said, oh my gosh, these books fit perfectly with the curriculum that we're doing at the school. Like, I can go in and all of this new stuff you're getting, it's, it's exactly what we need for teaching. So that's meshed really wonderfully, and in fact, I was able to then go to the friends, and they gave me another $1,000 to buy some items from the lists that we hadn't been able to purchase with that grant.
And finally, there is one policy item we did want to bring up with you. This will be coming to you in the not-too-distant future. Last year, you approved, City Council approved the elimination of the overdue fines. And that has proved to be very successful. It's very interesting to me how that also seems to follow along with trends. I am a big user of the library, but it's the electronic part of the library. I never have overdue fines anymore because it just suddenly disappears when 21 days is up, and, and I can't read or listen to it anymore. So it's, that kind of, that, you know, it's fascinating to me when you watch that, how that is changing as our society changes. So we implemented that, but it left another big question. What about all the ones, or all the fines that exist that already backfines? And so we will be bringing a proposal to you on how to deal with those backfines.
I forgot how much that was. I think you told us.
Oh.
Just sort of ballpark issue?
Ah, yeah, it was, it was a lot because we'd never delete an account if there's money owed on it. So going into our, the full amount was, I think, around $100,000, but that's.
We don't have to.
Lifetime.
Yeah, that's the, that's basically since the library was computerized.
So you'd be requesting more current fines?
Last two years.
It was, it was significant enough that I had Debbie book it as, as payables. You can't just have that amount of money just sitting out there without accounting for it in your, in your coffers and in your finances. So what we'll be asking you to do is really to write those off as, as a bad day.
It's, yes.
Kirsten, could you help me with, with this? Because you talked a little bit, and obviously it's glaring, the circulation is way up.
Yes.
Year to year, like that. But everything else says they are coming into the library, correct? I mean, is there, so does that just mean that the people that do come in are checking, using more of the circulation stuff?
Yes, and then also, of course, you don't need to come into the library to, to use the electronic resources. So somebody checks out an ebook, that still counts as a circulation for us, but they didn't physically come to the library. And the, the foot traffic looks a little bit dramatic on the, the chart there, but it's really about 5,000 people less.
It goes to track. I'd say 5,000 more.
I would love to see 5,000 more. I, also, it's worth noting that because of the way holidays fall, we were open for 23 hours less last year than we were the previous year, which probably accounts for at least 900 of those.
So I get, I guess the other thing that I would have is, based on your idea of trends of using, that would not show here then either. We haven't caught on to using the library trendfully as a, as open space or?
Yeah, it's a little bit, in its nebulous, you know, yeah, it's hard to track. I think that that's where the trend is going, but I don't know that that's reflecting quite yet in the way that our patrons are using it.
I was going to ask about the adult that's down in the circulation. So that was, I think you explained that, but trying to think how to put this, I hope it's, comes across as constructive. But some years ago, when I was involved in creating some charts, I was criticized because of the series of charts. In this case, I don't know if this will work all the time, but it didn't all start at zero. And if you notice here, you have a couple of charts that do start at zero, the child attendance.
And I'm going to throw Ron under the bus here.
Well, no, but the result is, and it was the point that you made on the, the foot traffic, really isn't down that much, but it looks like a line with the bar. And so if you all start with the zero, then the percentages accurately reflect the change.
You know that there are, there are three types of lies, you know? There's lies, really bad lies, and there's statistics. No, the charts, the thing to point out is that the chart in itself, two years is not a trend. And I did not ask Kirsten to put anything beyond just the two years that she gave me. So we'll put together a little bit more. Two years, this, this is a bit misleading because two years is not a trend. There's some good questions that can come out of it, but I would not put too much stock into this. Okay, anything else on the library before we jump to the police? Chief, you're on. Commission of the Police Department. The mission of the Lincoln City Police Department is to maintain human rights while enforcing state and local laws, protecting persons and property, and providing the highest quality professional services to all. Their vision, the Lincoln City Police Department is committed to establishing a positive legacy with its citizens and visitors it serves. This vision includes a city free from crime and the fear of crime, where people work together to improve our neighborhoods and general quality of life. The activities, or the output of the, or the activities that the Police Department is involved in order to accomplish the mission and the vision is patrol, investigations, code enforcement, emergency preparedness, public outreach, and then their support. Now, the support includes dispatch, records management, and evidence processing. Their support is very much like the finance to everybody else. All, all of what they do lead to the successful accomplishment of the activities that they Chief, do you want to just take a minute and just briefly mention a little bit on these?
Yes, patrol is our, our normal uniformed officers that are, you see out and about every day. They're tasked with everything from making routine citizen contacts and checking in with the business management teams around the city, to responding to 911 calls, and of course going out and, in their non-dedicated time trying to generate self-initiated activities such as traffic patrol and checking in on our neighborhood groups and that sort of stuff. Investigations is our detectives. We have three currently, which are on major roll book, but they do the more complicated investigations, and our largest crimes that they are involved in investigating are child abuse and sex abuse crimes. Code enforcement is dedicated to helping the city enforce our municipal codes around the city, both proactively and reactively. They spend about 60% of their time responding to complaints either from citizens or through our planning department, and then proactively going throughout the city and looking for opportunities to bring people into voluntary compliance before we have to take enforcement.
Before you leave that one, can I ask you, how many code enforcement officers do we have?
We just have one, so.
Not enough.
Probably not. So, emergency preparedness, we just replaced Mark Nicholson, who retired recently, with a remarkable fine, and Mr. Ken Murphy. I hope, I don't know if you all know his background, but he, I met Ken with Oregon State, when I was with the Oregon State Police, and he is a retired lieutenant colonel from the Oregon National Guard. But when he retired from Oregon National Guard, Oregon Emergency Management picked him up as their assistant director, and then he became their director. Under President Obama, he was then appointed to the Region 10 FEMA coordinator position, and has an extensive background in responding to many disasters, at least 45 major disasters that he's personally responded to and helped manage. So he retired into Lincoln City and approached me, reintroduced himself, and said he was looking for a volunteer opportunity, and I broke him in. So he's going to do a great job for us. We're going to move him into a lot more training with his position.
When do we get him?
Probably need to, probably just bring him into a city council meeting shortly and, and let him introduce himself, and bring him out of the speed, good idea. So, public outreach, one of the things that Mr. Chandler tasked me with when I took on the mantle of chief was to be more involved with our communities in many aspects. So in that, we are in the, since July of last year, our team has been involved in between three and four Lincoln City PD-sponsored events since then. And we've branched out, we've just completed our third annual Citizens Academy. We participated in our first national night out. We kicked off last year a women's self-defense class. We've got two more on the calendar now, coming up in February with our next one. And getting involved with the neighborhood watches and our business organizations around the, around the city. We've been involved in everything from the Halloween celebration, and there for that, our school resource officer is a dedicated officer to our schools as part of that. And so our officers are out trying to make personal contact with our businesses, and the feedback that we're getting is been pretty remarkable.
I was going to add, one more, you listed your officers also attend Neighborhood Association.
Yes, ma'am. So anytime any of our neighborhood groups want an update on what's going on in the community, or some advice on how they can be more secure and stuff, we, we send officers to that. And our support team, dispatch, they are an amazing group of individuals that dispatch for us. 2018, they were responsible for processing 16,371 cat events for the police, another 3,270 for fire, managed 143,000 plus radio transmissions, and another 36,000 fire transmissions on the radios, processed 6,100 plus 911 calls, and an initial 46,000 administrative phone calls in-house, so.
How does that compare to last year?
We have had a 10% increase in cat events, 10, 19%, and police, 19% increase in cat events and fire, 1.5% increase in 911 calls, and a 5% increase in administrative phone calls this last year.
So like your number.
So. Do you get any, did the texting 911 come in?
Texting 911 was established this last year and is in place.
Have you had any?
I'm not aware that our center has received any. I know Tillamook has received some.
Can I ask you about a slogan?
A slogan?
Yeah. You guys working on it?
Yes, and.
I've been asking for a few years!
The slogan is we got, and we're working on it, actually thinking about putting it on the back deck of our patrol cars, and it basically goes along with LCPD loyalty, compassion, professional dedication.
Nice, nice. That's pretty good.
That's a very good question.
That's good.
So, I had, you know, the fireworks were going off in my neighborhood, and I thought I shouldn't call 911, I should call a non-emergency number. What the heck is it? You know, and I looked at, so I printed out the non-emergency number, and I've got it by every phone, like on the refrigerator. And now when I hear a gunshot or something down there, which happens in college, I finally learned to call a non-emergency number. And I thought, maybe the number could be publicized better. If, if we have 911 texting, and it's not being used very much, do people know about it?
We've, we put it out in the media, and it's on our websites, and we've done the advertisement, and State of Oregon, actually, I think almost every 911 center in the state now has that.
Were we budgeting for 4th of July, like text in place, or like call to report fireworks?
There's two, there's two things that are, well, three things that are taking place as far as that, that we're actually going to be bringing to you as part of the budget discussion. One is, is increase in a campaign, education campaign, about what you can and can't do as far as the, as far as the fireworks go. Those, that campaign would primarily take place through the month of June. We don't want to do it too soon for the month of January, catching what people are thinking about it. As far as police, our initial discussions on that, we're probably going to be very similar to what we're doing now, how heavy-handed we want to go as far as finding, arresting, or any of those things, confiscating may be the appropriate level. And then the third is what you were talking about, is are there other ways in which we can report to those?
And I don't know how far or what was said last time, but was there, is there any room for like volunteers to, who wouldn't mind being at all the beach accesses, who are like associated with the Police Department as far as, is, one, is there enough time to try to, could you do it? Two, you know, is there a way that they can have a radio or something directly to the office? I don't know, your dispatch, or like, hey, look, this is, I'm an official blah, 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 you can't bring those out here. This is it. You know, and yes, this is to the police, you know, is there?
It's very working fast.
Could this, right, I mean, and I don't know what we hashed out last year, but I just want to.
So just to give you an idea of what we have done to this point, is that 4th of July in and of itself is the one day a year that there is no leave authorized for any member of patrol division. So all 25 of us will be on duty, and of course, we have to cover it earlier in the day too, but everybody's deployed. We keep that staffing on till, till at least midnight, and then start scaling down after that. In addition to that, we put out a petition and are often supported by Toledo PD and Newport PD, and the Sheriff's Office, OSP, will send extra patrols up here to assist us. As far as the volunteer part of it, Oregon State Police Parks volunteers have actually helped us out in the last few years, stationing a couple at DeRipper Wayside and down at helped us out in the last few years, stationing a couple at DeRipper Wayside and down at Rhodes Inn when they are available to do that very thing is to be in their OSP volunteer vests and kind of monitor and encourage people when they see that stuff to leave it alone. But they don't have any enforcement ability. And that's, that would be the challenge is to identify people that would be willing to give up their part of Fourth of July to be in those sites and, and take on that assessment of contacting people.
Is it illegal?
Right. And, but it would be difficult to put them into enforcement capacity, just a report capacity. And then the other reality of it is, is even if they have the radios and report that, it's not like we're not down there and seeing what's going on. We, we're aware of it. Just having the physical ability, even with everybody undoing, to give to everyone, for everyone you're contacting while you're busy enforcing that, it's all going off on the side. And then at night, being able to identify them as you drive up or walk up on them, you're seeing the shadows of people setting them off and then they disappear into the crowd and figure out which one did it. They shut down as they see you approach and then they go back up as they see you leave. So, it's, it's an interesting challenge and, and we've been pretty successful. I mean, we confiscate hundreds of pounds every year and as long as the people are willing to turn their illegal fireworks over to us voluntarily, confiscated hundreds of dollars from each, each person, we tend not to cite them because that's a fairly significant misdemeanor criminal charge that can go on, on a person's record for violating.
If, one more please. Is there any kind of additional beach access dumpster provisions to have big containers there or is there any kind of trash receptive increase for just that day? Has there been thought of that to just allow things to be dumped in since there's gonna be?
Yeah, my understanding is that we have moved additional trash resources into those beach accesses. State parks will do that and then solve and the beach cleanup crews will provide bags and stuff to be there on scene. We certainly could probably do more there if we're willing to do that.
Will you bring some of this back to us? Because there was a long list and you, you collapsed out of the specific items that you were.
We should be bringing that to you just within, within the month. Okay. Measures of success, primary. I did not ask the chief to put this together for you tonight because I've seen his reports and I didn't think you wanted to take all the time to read the books he would give us. But we will include those into the, into the, the upcoming weekly reports that you have.
How is your?
Is it up or down?
Up or down, chief?
Actually.
Depends on what?
Yeah, it depends on how you're looking at it. But in 2017, we saw eight percent decrease in person crimes, but one percent increase in property crimes. Twenty seventeen compared to twenty eighteen, we've had a half a percent decrease in person crimes and we're down another four percent in property crimes.
So, we'll, we'll send that information to you over the next little while, part of the weekly reports. This is one that I, that the chief reported on briefly that I am just absolutely thrilled with and that is the public interaction. Anecdotally, as I drop in and talk to businesses, I am hearing that quite often of both surprise and thrill that a police officer would drop in and say hi. And so, and then the other part of it is, is the chief mentions and this is really, I get to you, this is a major, major commitment that our police officers are making on things such as the Citizens Police Academy, giving self-defense classes. Those are some significant commitments, but they are, they are paying off. And if you recall, one of the things that it mentioned is the fear of crime. That's one of its missions is to reduce the fear of crime. That feeling of security that comes with knowing your officers is just really, really valuable. So, that's what I'm really thrilled with. The third is organizational partnerships. Those are our partnerships that we have with other law enforcement agencies so that we can call upon them. We recently held a meeting to discuss dispatch with all of the law enforcement chiefs and sheriffs in the county and it was very, very pleasing to see how well they are all working together. I do believe we have interlocal agreements with all of the agencies now and, and the Fourth of July is really a great example of, of how many other organizations came to assist us in a very, very busy day.
I would make an addition to that too is in addition to our inter-agency organizational partnerships, the partnerships that we have been able to develop within the community with our neighborhood groups and our, our business has been a huge, huge part of this.
I just wanna say one other thing after your tracking, your social media, I just, I wanna say how much I appreciate your Facebook posts. It seems like people are really using them and I see them on other people's.
It's getting more and more active very much, so.
Friends like, like it should.
Fantastic new cover photo. I do have one question. Is there, so I know there's two neighborhood associations in town, you know, and those do really well for those particular neighborhoods. Is there a way in which we could create more or, I mean, I understand if they would want it, they would do it, you know, I get that point of view, but like if they, if we, the city could say, hey, if you're interested in this, we could kind of help you along since who knows what it takes? And does it tie in with the police or anything like that? Just to say, hey, because we are concerned about this, we can, do you have answers?
I do. I have lots of answers, but one fast, quick one is emergency preparedness through the police department. That's the, all you, what you need is an issue to start the conversation. You need to do it in a location.
Go further. Kate Eschel is interested in this and I've heard her volunteer to help any group organize.
Yeah, I know, and this, I'm in the same neighborhood as she is, but I know, and just thinking of all the different neighborhoods and how cool it would be to have, you know.
We've had Rosen and Nell Scott both approached us about officially starting the actual national neighborhood. We're putting those together for them. Now, actually, they're putting those together for themselves and we're just kind of assisting and giving them advice. But we plan on, on splashing that media-wise so that other neighborhoods know that we were willing to support them. We plan on trying to assign a supervisor and a couple of officers as their primary liaisons for those individual place, groups. And I, I really expect that to build and I, I think bands right on is that, you know, with Ken coming in and us planning to really move him towards a training mode for not only the staff, but to work with the neighborhoods to really focus on.
Then you could have cash locations and things like that. It would be, it would incorporate multiple things that we're trying to test.
Chief, are you, I didn't hear well and I'm sorry, apologize, but under public outreach, is that where you had the school resource officer or do you consider that?
Very, very much so. I mean, he interacts with the kids, the teachers, the, the school district and, and the parents every single day and he's responsible for a huge amount of activities. We are one of the first, if not the first, agency in the state to go to the newest rendition of the DARE program, which was just officially adopted by the school district after Logan got back with that training. In fact, the other DARE, SROs in the, in the county now are going to school up and be trained in this because of Logan's, Logan's effort. But he is a, a SRO position. The city has graciously funded that for a lot of, several decades now and it is a remarkable, very excellent attachment to our community.
So, I, I'm wondering, is, would that cover under your method of success is wandering around? Is that what?
Well, wandering around thing, they're not, well, put in their.
That was my turn.
Walking their patrol cars and getting, getting out and, and going in and talking to the businesses and just engaging the public or the kids.
And I, I, I'm serious, 'cause I, I think, I agree with you. It's a great resource. I, I want you and the city getting credit for it.
Actually, I made a note to myself on here that I actually should probably break out that SRO position specifically in this report.
Then my next question is, it appears to be a trend starting where police departments are asking the school districts to pick up that cost.
We've never asked.
Are we trending or, you know, I just assumed you said, no, we aren't.
And this, this came about, the success of our SRO program, you know, has pushed super ages in the school district to try to figure out how to get the other agencies around the county to be able to afford to engage that. And we all know that, you know, we lost our lit team because of the other agencies not being able to participate. We kept our direct detective in as long as we could. We are actually now that we've got our three detectives up, the other agencies are coming back and asking now, can we start a street crimes team, right? So, going back to the drawing board on that, but, but in order to get SROs into the other schools down south, the school district stepped up and said, we'll, we'll pay half of that. I have not approached the school district about, say, hey, we've been doing this for years, where's our turn? We've been doing it and so I just haven't made, made that, that approach.
And, yeah, I'm, I'm pleased to hear that. I think we need to know that and publicize it because I think that's really important for me when you talk about community connection with schools and everything else.
Yes.
The other thing I, I noticed on here and so I'm gonna play it wrong because I know you would do something different, but as I recall, the Citizens Police Academy, this third year was probably the best one you had.
Yeah, I think the students in that were the.
Oh.
I'll go for it with the high grade.
Didn't shoot the good guy?
Well, it was an accident. It was his fault, his second. We hope that all of you have a chance to.
Next year. I'm going this year.
We're looking for the brave, collected official to be tasteful.
I must do it, so, there you go. Please. Love to have you.
Haven't heard many complaints about the warm and shelter lady.
So, I don't know if I can totally pick it up for that or not, but last summer and going into, to the fall, we had a significant increase in activity in the cafeteria and.
Police security or crime activity?
Pardon?
Crime activity or police activity?
Yes. So, anyway, we started encountering a, a, a number of individuals down there on a regular basis. So, we finally started issuing exclusion orders off the public property down there when we couldn't get them to cooperate and then the business started stepping up and requesting trespass out there. It still didn't kind of tamp it down and so because trespass is actually a crime, even though I knew that they would be booted or released from the jail immediately upon arrival, we started transporting people to jail if they had multiple offenses with us. And about four weeks into that, I met with family down there and although that was still higher on their radar, they all stated that it, it noticed a significant increase in activity down there and we have, you know, continued to monitor that, monitor that and deal with the repeat offenders down there in the, in a similar fashion, but that seems to have, seemed to have lowered the rate of problems down there. And then we got our, our folks down there doing more proactive, high visibility control and just being seen and making contact down there.
So, I have two final things. First is that in our weekly report, the weeks of city council meetings, those are the ones that I type up and they're generally followed, questions that you guys have had followed from the meetings and what. The other weeks, the off weeks, are the ones that are put together, our department heads put together. Those are the long ones. Much of that deals with the measures of success. I've been hinting at this, this, I haven't told them this directly, so they're hearing it for the first time. And that is that as we are introducing these to you to really outline the measures of success, I will be asking our department heads to really focus for the next while their parts of the weekly report that show, that lead to the measures of success so that you could see how the activities that they are doing are resulting in the things that we're saying to you. You can judge us on this. So, that's how we'll be getting with that. A final topic that I had, we had on the agenda, community development and planning. I'm moving, I've moved most of that to the next meeting except for one item report that I needed to make to you. Over the last little while, the city council had received a request, or received a request from Council Casper that we schedule Helping Hands to be on the upcoming agenda. We have done that. They will be on your February eleventh agenda. They'll be under Presentations. We're gonna make sure Presentations is up before any deliberations so that they can see that. Also included in that with those discussions was that Council Hinton had had a list of properties that she had identified as places that might fit within a business model. Helping Hands has a business model in which they're working with identifying properties that could ultimately be converted into facilities. I have that list. There's some properties of interest that staff and I have started to do some just preliminary exploration on those and I will be getting back with you. There's some interest in some properties that are, that are available and so we will in the very short term start providing you with a little bit of information so that you can determine how you would like to proceed in the allocation of your resources.
Cool. So, there, I'll send that back. Any questions from, you've had time to think about the presentations before you, you know, we've got fifteen, so.
No, we don't. I have, I do have. I just wanna say that, you know, in, when the department has provided the weekly updates on the off week, call it, I'd still like to get some anecdotal stuff from them besides just, well, this, this fits this, because there's all the kinds of things that happen that don't hit those things or may hit them all. I just, I like hearing the stories.
Since this is a department heads meeting and I think our department heads are, we have a higher percentage of women now, I think, right? And I would love to see how we compare to other cities that we have, I don't know, I think it's pretty cool that, that's more women, so. For a Ron's, a Ron's blog topic.
I don't know that I have that, but I can tell you some trends that I've seen throughout my career, which is really very, very fascinating. First of all, what's really important is that we don't look at gender when hiring. We look at qualifications.
Sure, absolutely.
In nineteen ninety-one, I hired the first woman police officer, female police officer in Centerville, Maryland and I really had to go look hard to get a candidate. What I have seen in the trend that we're seeing now is that the number of women candidates and the quality at which they are trained has significantly increased. It's been pretty amazing. How we compare to other communities, I would say is we probably have more female department heads than we do other communities. Setting that aside, what we have are the best of the candidates that we have received. They are top-notch, male or female, the people that we have hired are the best of the candidates we received.
But if you look at our, our sworn department, twenty percent of our force is.
There's a woman detective.
Seventy percent of my, seventy, seventy-five percent of my dispatch.
Female detective, sir, how long?
She's been with us coming up on three years.
All right. All right, you go. Follow the go. Thank you. Thanks for participating.
Thank you, Riley. Just so you know, for the Fourth of July last year, this is the question.